It is nine AM. All right. Good morning, everyone. It is nine AM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, November twenty, November twenty second, twenty twenty two. Um, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Louis, would you like to lead us today?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic of the United States, under our individual.
Thank you. Um, just a reminder, we are streaming on YouTube and also if you have a cell phone, if you'd want to silence it, if you'd like to take a call, please step out into the hallway to do so. Item number two, call for public comment. These are comments that are not on the agenda and for information only, they may be submitted in person or via telephone. The two phone numbers are six oh five eight eight two six two four eight. Or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven, and we will address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any for fellow commissioners?
No.
Okay. Item number four, action to approve the November twenty two, twenty twenty two agenda, motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the November fifteenth, twenty twenty two minutes of the Cuddington County Board of Commissioners, motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any additions or corrections? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye. I oppose that motion carries. Monthly reports, we will start with Emergency Management Director. Good morning, Andrew.
Morning.
Morning, Andrew.
Morning.
Is your recorder on?
Thanks.
Is it?
No.
The red light was on.
It was.
I thought it was.
There now it is.
So. Us, we had a virtual site inspection. It was initially going to be an in-person site inspection for the disaster declaration from May twelfth. Just based on the size and scope of the project. It ended up just being virtual. They just requested I go get a few more pictures and we just. Met via like teleconference, so. Everything was good there. Again, kind of still waiting to see kind of when it gets burned, but. We may have to file for an extension if it doesn't get completed by December twenty eighth, I want, so. Um. I mean, there was some small stuff renewed the over with permit for the snowcat and, you know, just, you know, general stuff that we do like annually. Um, I attended the safety conference. With personal prone facilities and highways. That was a pretty. Good experience. I thought it was a good conference. Um. Talked to Don and Tim with the Police Department and Fire Department. Uh, just kind of an initial talks for an exercise. That's been identified, something that we could. Use some more training on. And I identified a potentially useful training that would come up in towards the end of January. Um, Sherry participated in P twenty five planning like Zoom call. Um, and from my understanding, it basically. Reiterated that, you know, like we are in a good spot as far as the. You know, that P twenty five conversion, um, like within our office, so. So that was. Overall positive. L E P C, uh, the generator project for Cransburg. Kelly or Christina from First District has been. Touching base with me periodically like with with do outs from from our end, but I think that that's moving along pretty well. Um, Sherry helped the Sheriff's Office with their code drive, which was. A pretty big success. I think that, uh, well, I guess I remember Brad will talk a little bit more about that, but. I was, I was blown away by, you know, the generosity of the community and like it was. It was fun to see, I guess, from from my perspective. Um. I guess, uh, the L car, that's another annual thing that we do. Started reviewing that. PDM. Uh, looking over that, we have the forty five day review period, just taking notes on things that need to be changed and updated in the exact existing document. Uh, that final meeting is on December fifth. And then I completed I S one twenty, and that was actually the final course that I had for the professional development series for female. And. It's the final online course that I had that I needed to complete within twenty four months higher, so. Um, still have a couple of courses left. Uh, one of them is coming up at the end of the month. The final would be. Not offered until this man. I guess pending your questions, that's, that's all I have for you.
What's L car?
Oh, sorry, uh, the local capabilities and readiness assessment.
Okay.
So it just.
Is that a federal thing or is that a?
I think it's stating, um, are the regional coordinators coming to discuss it with me next week? Uh, basically it goes over, you know, what we have for plans, like have we identified resources, staging areas, you know? Like specific things within our plans, like are we storm ready, you know, like just things like that. So.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Thanks, Andrew. All right, we will move on then to our next monthly report and that is to share.
Morning.
Morning, Brad.
How's it going today?
Good.
Good. How about with you?
Not too bad. Sun shining.
Yep.
Not snowing, so it's always a bonus, right?
And no wind.
And no wind. Exactly. The real box. It doesn't look like it's bad coming up here for Thanksgiving, so. Lot of travel. It's usually a busy weekend for law enforcement, so.
Yeah.
That's always a bonus too, so. Everybody should have a copy here. We'll get started on the commissary monthly balance sheet here. That'd be the first page here. If you see. Um, bank balance end of October is twenty seven thousand, one hundred thirty six dollars and twenty one cents. At the time, there was three hundred sixty seven dollars in the lobby ATM booking kiosk there for a grand total of twenty seven thousand. Five hundred and three dollars and twenty one cents. Those are the resident balances. That was a snapshot in time there. Uh, we had one thousand, forty three dollars and seventy cents. Three thousand, eight hundred forty nine dollars, ninety two cents of commissary items. And fund balance of twenty two, six oh nine fifty nine for a total of twenty seven, five oh three, twenty one. Which should bring us back to our fifteen thousand initial investment that we've got in the account there. And the commissary program made, um, county one thousand, one hundred and forty two dollars and ninety one cents in the month of October. Okay, move over to the next page there, monthly balance sheet for the sheriff's checking account here. Uh, twelve thousand, seven oh seven. Oh, three, twelve thousand, seven oh seven oh three was the bank balance end of October. Um, you can see we collected twenty eight dollars in copy fees, eleven thousand, four hundred eighty eight dollars and fifty three cents and sheriff's fees were collected. And three hundred seventy five dollars in warrant fees were collected for a grand total of eleven thousand, eight hundred ninety one dollars and fifty three cents. So. See, we got printed checks that reimbursed for for seventy four dollars, brings our total back to eight eighty nine fifty. Lee's got our activity kind of pulled up here on the screen here, some sheriff's office activity numbers here for the month of October. Uh, we responded to six hundred seventy five cases and calls for service for the month of October. Uh, twenty two accident reports were completed. There was more accidents that we responded to, but this is actual accident reports that were completed. Um, sixty eight. Warrants were served. Two hundred and one civil papers were served. And there was two thousand, nine hundred eighty transport miles put on. That was a total of twenty two people transported and fourteen trips. We're trying to get as many in a trip when we go a direction that we can, so. In the middle of the page there, you'll see our average daily population for October in the jail was sixty point nine four people. Uh, there was sixty six for a high ADP, low ADP was fifty four. Uh, twenty people on the scram bracelet. Five people on the remote breath. Thirty six people in the twice daily P V T. And thirty eight people on the twice weekly U As. And one person on a sweat patch for a grand total of a hundred people in the twenty four seven program for the month of October. And there was a hundred and eighty three bookings in the jail in the month of October. Uh, new thing that we're kind of just been collecting some info on since HSA here in town here hasn't got their new facility up and going, and we don't have the Trinity Hills. Our bed out there right now, so we've had eight people in the month of October that we had in our facility that had no. Charges. They were being held on mental health charges, so we're hoping that HSA can get their facility up and going and. Um, kind of cut that number down so we don't have those numbers coming through our facility.
What's the, uh, what's the average length of stay for those people when they come in?
Twenty four hours or less typically within that timeframe, depending on the time that they get brought in.
Evaluated.
Evaluated and you get all the ducks in a row to either grow or stay.
Is, is there, they don't get tracked in the jail database at all? Do they, they're not prop, are they booked there?
We started booking a few years ago to keep track of people that are coming into our facility and coming and going. Um, just so we have their information because something were to happen to them, we need to have some personal information, et cetera, so. Uh, we did start doing that a few years ago, just to keep track of the people that are are in our facility. They have a medical condition, et cetera, so.
Does, does, so do they show up in the ADP number or?
They, or they. I don't think they'll show up in the ADP number. That's something that we kind of got filtered, filtered out, yeah, okay, so. So that's number been eight to ten here the last couple of months. We've been keeping track of that just to see how many people's out charges that are being.
So if somebody called, uh, considers X X X in jail, it's just a way of tracking, let's say, yeah, he's here.
Yep, let's say, we also have a set, so that person would not show up on our, our, uh, screen. Uh, on the screen, yeah, on our website and see who's in jail. That person will not show up because of the mental holes and no charges, so. Uh, just for kind of a privacy thing, so if someone does call and ask, we're sure that they're.
I was thinking of a family member or something like that. Check the list and go, no, he's not there.
Yep. This shows how important the HSA project is, so. Yeah, so. All right, and if you scroll down to the bottom here, we'll, we'll through just a few more numbers. We had, uh, collected seventeen thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and ninety two cents in out of county contracts. Three thousand, two hundred and forty dollars in work release fees. Six thousand, nine hundred eighty eight dollars and sixty five cents in twenty four seven fees that were collected. And four thousand, seven hundred ninety two dollars in scram fees that were collected in the month of October. No questions there, just a couple of things you want to.
The out of town contracts must have taken quite a, quite a jump because they figured this there.
They've actually been kind of staying the same. I think some of it just kind of when bills get sent out, when counties get them paid and when we get them back and. They've been staying around, we've been hovering around fifty five to sixty people in jail. Um. You can see the average of sixty, sixty point nine, so this, this month currently we went around fifty to fifty five, fifty of them caught it getting about five or out of coming contract.
Dude, that's the highest for the whole year.
Yep, kind of fluctuating just a little bit there. Lot of DOC holds too that kind of been coming and going, roll holds, so. I just want to touch base on the election, um, that we had there, coming and going through there, some of the numbers coming through the courthouse during the election there. Couple of years from now, when we have another election, I was hoping that maybe Brenda and I can sit down and we can kind of look at early voting and some of that. Uh, typical high numbers for people coming into the courthouse are three hundred fifty to four hundred. That is a very busy day for Dave. We were seeing nine hundred plus people coming in for early election. Um, so for a couple of years from now, just looking at ideas, maybe we can put up a booth or have someone downstairs at Dave's. We're not running them through the whole courthouse. Um, just for voting. Um, that was like I've helped out. We had guys that are helping out in the booth and. Shake Dave's hand. When you go down there, he was very busy and, um, very, very busy, did very good job for voting there, so.
So we said, we said like almost every day of the early voting period, eight hundred two.
It's not, it wasn't court either. It was days that there was court and we're talking.
Okay.
So I.
Well, that's, that's, some of those, some of those are for court.
Yeah, and the thing is too, you know, they were paying taxes also during that time, so some of that was.
Routine courthouse business in addition to the voting, so.
Um, some of the peak days when you had some. You know, that court was busy, yeah, early voting, all that, so.
That's definitely something to, to look into. I think I like that idea. Is there any? Issues with having some stations? Okay. To the office, okay.
You have to be in charge of that. One person down there.
You wouldn't know which ballot they needed.
About guns helping out or you would have a passion talking about clothing down there.
I, I was talking about voting down there. If we set up a booth or cubicle and have someone man a little office down there or something, just. Yeah, something we can discuss going forward here. We have a couple of years to kind of.
That we need.
Yeah.
For this type of thing and remember that comes through here.
Yeah.
I.
Well, maybe we can streamline it somehow, I guess.
Yeah, we had a couple of years to kind of discuss it and look going forward, so.
I was here one of those busier days. I, I didn't go through the security, but. I didn't see any lines though. I mean, they moved it through pretty rapidly.
There's been times like, say, I had stepped in with just two of us and there was getting to have some lines and, um, so. And that was really kind of.
Yeah.
There, yeah, they would come in swarms, lunchtime is really busy, certain times of the day, Fridays are busy.
Until about three thirty, yeah, yeah, that is pretty busy.
Then you have tax season that was coming in there in October.
They were doing both.
Yeah, it was, it was very, very busy there through the, so just something that, uh, maybe we can look at or discuss going forward a little bit, so. Um, as Andrew was talking about, we at the sheriff's office had our, um, SO project that we do every year. Uh, we did a coat jacket drive for, for people. Um, I'm going to say we served around three hundred families. Um, that come through. Fifty four tables of coats that were probably three feet deep and we had them all sorted out. Um, kids in youth jackets and boots went extremely fast. Um, we were able to give away pretty much all of the jackets and everything that was given and donated. Um, so we were kind of surprised by the, the need and in that kind of in the community here that, that need, so. And I'd also like to thank everybody that did donate to that code drive. We just did it for a couple of weeks there because it was getting cold, so. Um, very, very good turnout there, so.
Really did get cold when you were doing that.
Yep. Pistol permits, another one in the office here that have been extremely busy. I figured by now they would kind of slow down and kind of level off. It actually seemed like they've been getting busier. Uh, we've been doing around fifty to sixty permits a month, which is up probably from ten to fifteen to twenty a month. So that's a lot busier than it is. Uh, a lot of fingerprints, so our fingerprint machine that we got has been really busy. Uh, getting a lot of use and that's taking a lot of staff time running through all the pistol permits in the backgrounds and everything they gotta do in that.
Is that, is that the enhanced mostly or?
We're getting enhanced renewals, enhanced and just regular ten dollar permits.
Okay.
Any, any reason that you can think of why?
Um, since July first, when there's no more fees. Uh, people seem like they're coming in to get their, their permit, so that, that's the biggest change that we've noticed, they don't, so.
Brad, can you just explain that? I guess maybe there's people with questions, uh, the, the permits.
Sure.
So the enhanced versus regular permit, I don't know if now is a good time to top mention that, but.
Uh, there's, there's several different types of permits. There's the basic permit, which is a ten dollar permit where you can carry it to the state of South Dakota and a handful of other states in the. U S here that have reciprocity with the basic permit. There's a gold card permit, which I wouldn't even recommend getting. It's, um, sixty. Fifty dollars. They've changed the fees quite a few times during the last couple of years too, so I think that one's fifty bucks and, um, no, it's free now. There, there you go. That one's free, actually. Um, they're all free, but that one doesn't do anything different than the basic permit, so the gold card, we're not seeing a whole lot of. The enhanced permit is the one that most people want to get. You have to take a class. Um, there's a lot of instructors throughout the community here that'll put on a class every weekend. I know there's a lot of them that are going on. You take this short little class, there's a fee for the class, uh, because that's instructors that are putting that on. Uh, once you take that, you can come in, get your permit, you have to do fingerprints. There's a little more of a background, gets sent to the state and it gets sent back to us. What that does is that gives you. Uh, thirty seven other states for reciprocity. Uh, once you've done that, which is Minnesota, the big one right next door, which most people want to get, so. Um, the enhanced permit has been the big one that people want to get. On the county side and the state side, there's no longer any fees for the background check. Um, fingerprint fees and or the cost of the permit. Uh, it used to be a hundred dollars and then it used to be. Forty six bucks to send off your background packets and then for us to do the background and then you can get your. And then the permit for. For all that and it's good for five years, so.
So who's covering those costs now?
Um, the Secretary of State is going to reimburse the counties a very small portion of that now. Um, the Sheriff's Association, we kind of fought against that because we did keep a very small portion of that before, you know, like for instance, on the. Ten dollar permits, when we were doing them, we got to keep three dollars of that. We're doing all the work and then seven dollars would go to the state. Uh, legislation passed that there's no longer any fees, so the state. Agreed to reimburse the counties a small portion of these, so we have to keep track of the number that we're doing. And we have to reconcile with the state here in December, January to see if they'll reimburse us some of these fees, so. Plus, we're working on, so it's a lot more work, so been real busy with pistol permits in the office, so.
Sounds like it.
Well, thanks. Just a couple more things here, uh, vehicles. I'm looking at budgeted for three vehicles next year. I'm looking at state bid, working locally here. Um, and it's tough getting vehicles if you don't have. By certain deadlines and all this net, so those are things that we're looking at. Uh, hopefully here in the next few weeks, we're able to nail something down and bring something to you guys here with vehicles. Um, to hopefully get something ordered because those are kind of hit and miss on whether or not you can even get those, so. What else? The intercoms system and the cameras and the lock system that we. Earlier in the year, beginning of the year, when we all, when we agreed to get those up and going, we're still waiting for parts on. Some of it has been installed. Some of it has not been installed. We're still waiting on parts. He has a hopeful date of December seventh or eighth. Um, to come and install some more of these projects and get some going. And we still won't have everything, so I'm just looking at billing for end of the year. I'm guessing that's coming up here. The thirteen.
Thirteen is the last bill day of the year.
If we don't have everything completed by then, these are some large projects. I don't know how that works going into next year. They're kind of in the works and.
I mean, can they bill us for what they've done?
I'm trying to do that. He has a thing of, he doesn't like to bill.
We, we can, you know, still cut a check on the last Tuesday.
Okay.
But, um, other than that, if it's budgeted for this year and it doesn't get spent, you would just ask the board for a supplement next year. Is the cleanest way for the state auditors to look at it.
All right. So we got to share that, kind of some things that we're still working on here.
So is, is that the, uh, the doors for the, the one cell block that's still?
That also is still in limbo. Last I heard is they're being built and hopefully we can get them installed.
Those are custom doors for those.
The older. That was a non-budgeted item anyways, so.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully we can get that up and going here soon too, so. Um, one other thing I plan on applying for a grant for courthouse security, uh, doing some camera updates here, working with, uh, maintenance Steve here in Mullen Graff to. Um, kind of make that happen. Um, it's going to be just shy of ten thousand dollars is the grant portion. And I know it's going to be a little bit more. I'll let Steve talk on that when he does his thing, but, uh, the product will be a little bit more expensive than that, but he said he has some funds that he can take care of that. That's all I got, Shane, so.
Good, so thank you, Brad.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
All right, thanks.
So I just have a comment. Um, I had my community partners meeting. And a couple of the school personnel from our outlining schools are on that call and seem very supportive of your school resource officer, so they seem like they're excited about having. That available, so.
Yep, I have another meeting with the superintendent next Tuesday to, yeah, start talking a little more on numbers and kind of looking at things and seeing, seeing where we can go forward on that, so.
Right.
Definitely a need there going forward, so.
In relation to that grant that you're going to apply for, are you going to be doing it or Steve, because?
I, my office will be doing, applying for the grant, working with Steve to, um, implement it and get it all up and going and I know there's going to be some. The project that he's kind of looking at with cameras and updating the server and some of that, it's going to be over that amount. Um, the grant we're looking up to ten thousand dollars and then. So anything above and beyond that, come on his budget, so.
Right, so whenever you do that, typically just to get approval from the board to go ahead and.
Yeah.
Apply just when you get to that point. That would be it. Anyone else have any other questions?
That's it.
Nope.
All right, very good. Thanks, Brad. Happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Thank you. Okay, then let's move on to item number seven, action to approve payout of unused haul road restoration funds. So we had that before us last week. I think we have those. Um, that all determined. I don't know, Brick needs to come up, or you, who wants to?
It's fine. Uh, between Wayla and myself, we got, um. The number nailed down. Um, the original agreement. And I don't know why, um, they sent more than the, the original agreement calls for. That was another thing that we discovered in reconciling our numbers. His, uh, his funding that. He listed was eleven million, four eighty four, four seventy five, and we actually have received eleven million, five hundred thousand either even, so we've got those straightened out. See, the amount to be returned to next era is three million, eighty one thousand, one hundred and ninety seven dollars and ninety two cents.
All right, so we'd look for a motion then to.
Second motion.
Motion by, uh, Gable, second by Van Duzen.
And the only thing we're waiting on is where we send them funds. Wayland is still working on that to figure out where we're supposed to send the check, so.
Okay.
That's the only thing we're waiting for. We will get it done before the end of the year, hopefully.
Very good.
Your house.
Any other comments or questions?
Local address.
Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, that motion carries. Item number eight, action to approve job shadowing for L A T C H S T student at the welfare office. Good morning, Sarah. Good morning. Um, it's pretty straightforward. We just had a request from the H S T program at Lake Area to have a student job shadow with me for, for next week. It's thirty hours next week.
Quick motion to approve.
I'm stuck with that.
Okay, motion by Gable, second by Johnson. How, it's, how many weeks? It's just one. Just one week, okay. All right.
Thirty hours.
Any other comments, questions, hearing that? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose. Is Brenda need to sign this or we just, okay.
No, I think it's just for insurance purposes. Now if the commissioners approve it, now she'd cover it under our liability.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. All right, okay, very good. See you.
Oh, I didn't know that's what we were doing.
Well, I thought that was how, that, I thought that's what we came up with last year.
Okay.
Um. Because they have their own insurance too.
They do, okay, all right, all right. Well, as long as she's approved.
She's under Lake Area's insurance.
Okay, yeah, yep, okay.
That's what we had to do in order for her, it's a formality.
Yes, okay, all right, thank you.
Very good. All right, item number nine then, action to approve the renewal of the county liquor license applications. And we have five of those listed.
And I did check with Brad and he has no problem with any of these licenses.
We want to do them one at a time or take them all?
Uh, we can take them all, but I'll just list them.
Yeah.
Um, so the first one is Country Road Barn. And their payment is eight hundred and fifty dollars. Dakota Suca Casino has payments of eight hundred and fifty and five hundred because they also have. Um, on off sale wine and cider. Um, Joy Ranch in South Dakota, five hundred dollars for wine and cider. Rooster Sports Bar. Eight hundred and fifty dollars. And South Fork Lounge, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
All right. So now I look for a motion to approve. Johnson, that motion, second by Van Duzen. Any other comments, question? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, that motion carries. Item number ten, action to approve an M O U between Cuddington County and Lutheran Social Services to continue with the licensure process for the court resource family and good morning, Louis. If you just want to state your name just for the. Record and then I'll let you lead into it.
Sounds good. Thank you. Louis Canfield, uh, Director of Youth Diversion here in Cuddington County.
Um, so as you guys are aware, may be aware that we are, we have a one-year grant from Department of Corrections to uh, apply for a court resource home family. For kids that score for an alternative to detention, uh, but can't go home. It's kind of a, you know, on average, maybe nine to twelve kids a year that might use this service. Um, so this is an M O U that I'm, I'm asking the county to sign, just it outlines um, responsibilities of each party, L S S and then the county. Um, it, it, there is some confusion here because there, within the, the M O U, it states some uh, some transactions of funds. But just to be clear, those funds are not coming through the county. There's a lot, they're all coming through the Boys and Girls Club via the grant. Uh, from Department of Corrections. So it just outlines everybody's role. Um, of course, L S S, they are licensing the family that's been recruited, helping them with the training process. And then the county's role. County slash Boys and Girls Club's role is to reimburse L S S for um, any charges that incur with the training process and the licensing process. So. Um, again, it's for uh, the one-year grant that we're kind of in the process currently with. We have recruited a family, which has been great. They're going through the. The licensing process as we speak and hopefully uh, gosh, early in January. Uh, we were able to start utilizing the program.
Great. We'll make a motion to approve.
All right. That's my Van Duzen.
I'll second.
It's second by Gable. So this is what you were talking about when you were up here before about um, these families that will take. Individual or youth into their homes until it's uh. I don't know if the word is safe, until it's the best for them to go back into their.
Yeah, exactly. It's, it's for those kids that don't score high enough on the R A, uh, the risk assessment instrument um. To be detained, but unfortunately set many times, not many times, but occasionally a youth. Uh, just can't go home because there's a conflict at home, but our only option is to detain them for a period of time. So, so this, this will alleviate that with short-term housing for these kids.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Go to it.
Yeah. Have you had a chance to review the M O U or?
And um, the question I had, who was the answer? And I thought that there were grant funds that this could pass through, but.
Where do the grant funds come from?
Department of Corrections through, yeah. They don't go through the.
Okay, that was.
But because the, because, because the program is a quarter proves process for juveniles.
That's being handled by the Boys and Girls.
Being handled by the.
So we are not the grant applicant at all.
Correct.
Okay. And so the reason it needs to come to the county is?
Well, it's because the county, the, the, the program is a county program. So uh, we just need to keep you guys in the loop and, and have your approval on anything. Yep.
Thank you.
So, and this is, go ahead, good. Okay. Well, so, so looking at the, the, so the call compensation, that's covered by the grant, but you mentioned something about. Reimbursement for expenses after services have been provided. What kinds of things are, and that's.
Well, the, the reimbursement would come from the Boys and Girls Club requesting reimbursement. Through the Department of Corrections for grant funds. So.
Okay.
For example, um, L S S is going to charge us uh, travel expenses to visit with the family.
Yeah.
So we're going to pay that and then reimburse them.
You guys will be reimbursed.
I'll be reimbursed. Correct.
Yeah.
Got it.
So this in the entirety is an information thing.
Informational.
It's oversight, you know, cause we. Yeah, cause we, you know, yeah.
Cause we.
Yeah. And, and the other, the other two pilot programs, uh, Mitchell and Aberdeen, they're applying for the grant through their county. So it's a little different with us applying as a Boys and Girls Club, but we're using the same form. So if that.
Well, it, it kind of makes sense because as we, as you know, we take on your program overall in the county budget, you know, that's kind of at which we started doing this year. So.
Right.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yep. Just procedure. All right. Any other comments, questions?
It's a great explanation. Thank you.
Yep. If not, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. That motion carries. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You have a nice Thanksgiving as well. Thank you. All right. Item number eleven, action to apply for local assistance and tribal consistency funds. And Cindy, do you want to talk about it or do you want me to talk about?
Yeah, you have more information than I do.
Okay. So this is a um, another. Grant somewhat like ARPA, but it's through the, through the tribal consistency. So it is like the P L T. Um, payment lieu of taxes for counties that have reservations or tribal land in their county that you don't receive taxes for. So. Um, it's configured on the amount that's in your county or just a base. So we will get to fifty thousand dollar payments basically. So we're going to end up receiving a hundred thousand dollars for this. Um, and so I kind of talked to Cindy about it. It would be nice to do it the same as our ARPA funds, run it through salary. Um, put it into the building fund to help fund the um, improvements that we're going to be making. With the building.
So in other words, do it, use, use this for personnel. I'm looking at the reporting requirements. They don't look fun. Um, and.
No, yeah, the only thing that they will not fund is um, lobbyists, basically. So.
So, so just, we go, you do.
Any governmental purpose.
Yeah.
We'd actually use it for personnel, which frees up funds for.
Yeah. So then the reporting require.
Those, those um, reports are much clearer when you look at our, our salary report, reports. Yes.
And we can use it for that purpose. And then that frees up dollars that we will be able to put towards our. Expensive project that will be coming up to improve our building.
Madam Chair, just a question for you. How do they determine what you're eligible to receive?
That I don't.
Mileage?
Formula.
No, there's, yeah.
There's a formula online that talks about it.
And there's quite a few of us that are getting the same amount. So I think there's like a base and then it depends like out west they'll receive. You know, considerably more because they have more. So yeah, it's a formula.
Could be a minimum amount possibly.
No, no, this is something.
Brand new. I, I don't know.
Yeah.
This start west, kind of west of the river where a lot of. Counties have reservation land, a large portion.
As far as I know, this is the first amount of money that's ever been offered to any county in South.
And it may have come through Naco.
And it could be a result of our West River Counties lobbying Naco to.
If you look at that.
Through the W I R.
I don't know. There were a number of county commissioners concerned over there.
Yeah, there, there, you know, there. There's a couple of colonies that are. Facing financial difficulty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many acres of ground do we have in Cottington?
You'd have to ask Sean of that. I'm not sure. Okay. We have.
Thank you.
How many parcels?
I'll make a motion to approve that. Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Any other comments, questions?
To me, it sounds like it's going to operate a little bit like P L T does for other federal lands, but I, I think it was.
Basically replacing our lost revenue.
Mm-hmm. It's the same sort of. Yeah.
That's, that's.
All right. Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. That motion carries. So. I will work on that and maybe hopefully with the assistance of Cindy, we'll get that grant.
I looked at the portal this morning and it doesn't look. Too bad. The, the deadline to apply is January thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. So.
There's some counties who have received it though. So we'll get it in as quick as we can. So. Anyway. All right. So with that then, item number twelve, action to approve the ARP October salary transfer.
Uh, so this is our salaries that were paid out in October. And we have an allowable amount of six hundred and two thousand fifty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents. That can be transferred to the general fund and the highway fund and the victims of crime fund to supplement those salaries.
Make a motion to approve the transfer.
By Van Duzen.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any other comments, questions?
Give up that a moment again.
Yep. The total is six hundred and two thousand fifty-nine. Dollars and ninety-one cents. And I looked and it looks like we have about three million left that we can do this with. So it could be another five months before we expend all of that one.
Perfect.
And I don't remember the deadline for expending that was like.
Twenty twenty-four. Yeah.
So we'll be within that guideline.
So we are, yeah, we are on track.
All right. Um, item number thirteen. Oh, yeah. Sorry.
No.
Any other comments, questions, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. That motion carries. Item number thirteen, note court-appointed attorney fees hourly rate increase.
Um, this is just something for you to look at. We've been notified by the U J S that court-appointed attorney fees for twenty twenty-three will increase. Around one hundred and one dollars per hour to one hundred and seven dollars per hour, which is. Uh, we haven't seen an increase in a single year like this before, to my knowledge. It's usually been one or two dollars. So. For whatever reason, um, there's no action you need to take. It's just a note.
Okay.
I see the mileage on here is a dollar a mile.
I don't think that's changed. I think that's pretty standard for.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Item number fourteen, note holiday office closures and also we will not be meeting next Tuesday. So then. Uh, our next meeting would be December sixth.
And the holiday office closures will be this Thursday and Friday. For the states following the state.
And do we know what the Christmas ones are yet or?
Uh, yeah, Christmas, the governor has given December twenty-third and. Then with Christmas Day falling on the twenty-fifth, we would automatically get the twenty-sixth off. So. The twenty-third is, is a day that will get invited by the governor in addition.
It's my birthday. She gave you my birthday off.
Hey. If you're a colleague, boy. You probably still have to work for the city. Okay. Item number fifteen, action to approve claims for payment.
And we have a few claims that we need to pay. Um, let's take the first one separately because it's the nine-one-one surcharge payment to the city of Watertown. For September collections.
I will excuse myself as well.
And it is in the amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
So move.
Johnson, second by Waterman. Any comments, questions?
Say that number one more time.
Twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and it was for September surcharge collection.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries.
And then the remainder of the claims are mostly our credit card payments and then the um. The first one is our election night assistance to Boy Scout Troop two oh nine for seventy-five dollars. Um, we accidentally paid one of our election workers just seventy-five dollars. So we had to pay her the balance of her. And that was to Lorna Stonebarger. And then we had a Visa Relia Bank for the auditor's office for fifteen ninety-eight and the state's attorney's office for one seventeen fifteen or. Um. And indeed add. Um, Visa Relia Bank. Training, pro-training for the detention center nine, nine ninety-eight seventy-five and Zoom for the detention center three fifty-three sixty. Visa Relia Bank for the welfare office miscellaneous supplies, and I believe a couple of um, rent payments were made using that card. Total was sixteen oh six forty. That's it.
Motion to approve paying the bills.
All right. Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose. That motion carries. Item number sixteen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Uh, nothing today. Things will be coming.
Item number seventeen, action to approve personnel changes.
None today. And I have one travel request.
All right.
Max with the weed and pest supervisor to attend the Vandy's year-end conference. It's a one-day to travel to two falls.
Move it approve.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. That motion carries. Item number nineteen, public notices, possible formal commissioners to be in attendance at. So we have two weeks. Um, thing one, I guess. On the thirtieth, there'll probably be media here at one o'clock. Um, there will be the announcement of the acquired. Um, property that um. For non-congregate. Uh, emergency housing. So there will be an announcement here in the commission chambers at one o'clock that all that information will be coming, but there could be a.
That's on the thirtieth.
That's on the thirtieth. Yep. So there'll be more to come into the media with that spot for our purposes. Um.
Is it?
Of November.
November.
November. Yep.
Just curious on that one. It says that a county thing or we're just using this as a venue?
They're just. This is a venue. Yeah. Just using this as a venue. Um, also Farmer's Business Bank will, will be December first. I can't think of anything else unless someone else has something.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
All right. Do we have anything for old business? About new business? All right. How about for the open? This is where we would take public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Did you ladies have something that you wanted to bring to us? If you want to come up here and state your name, please?
Morning.
Linda York, and this is Bonnie Morris. We're from.
Okay, if you want to.
Sit down and talk into the microphones, please. You're live and on the air now.
I am Linda York, and this is Bonnie Morris. And I am the secretary chairman of the Ralph and Elsie Miller LLC. It's a farm and we're an LLC. And we are concerned about our farmland. Um. We have some pictures here. And we have a question on, um, see, we got over four inches of rain. Last summer in July. And our land renters had massive corn washout. You know, their corn got all washed out. And then we discovered that. This is a picture of the.
Where is that located at?
It is on Sheridan Township.
What township?
Sheridan.
Sheridan. What road?
Section twenty-nine. It's next to Highway eighty-one. And then um. Southwest quarter of section twenty-nine.
So what is your concern, I guess?
Well, we went to the Farm, Farm Service Agency. Uh, we had been there earlier last summer to see what we could do about the. Um, erosion and we, we also. Uh, spoke with the Natural Resources Conservation District and um, they said we could. Uh, have it planted into grass waterways. And which. There was at one time when my, our dad first rented the land out and the renter tore him out.
Sorry. Can you tell us what the name is? Just.
Ralph Miller.
Okay.
Ralph Miller.
Thank you. Yeah.
So what is it that?
Um. Since that time, we've spoken to our, our land, our renters and. Of course, they don't sound very crazy about having to put grass waterways in, but I guess. They're going to have to do, deal with what we decide, right? So upon more inspection, um, we looked, went and looked at that area. Um. This area up by the fence line. Here. And on our property. In our field, it's, I mean, you have, it's quite a dip. It's a big dip here. And also there's a pile of rocks. Here. On Ray Octoburg's property, his land.
Mm-hmm.
And um, it's obvious to us that he's tiled it. And nothing's, nothing was said to us. We weren't asked about, you know, about it or told anything. And on our land renters didn't tell us anything either. So, um.
So is that on his land where that, where the pipe comes out? Is that on the edge of his property?
This is his side here.
Yep.
And it's running onto ours, which made ours worse from all that rain.
Right. So I'm just going to stop you right here just to let you know in Cottington County, we do not have any drainage ordinance in place. So any sort of water issues is a civil matter. And so if you feel that you are, you know, being encumbered by that, it, it is something that you. Need to talk with the adjoining landowner about and try to come to some sort of solution. Or go that, that route. Cause we really have no.
Visit with an attorney about.
Yeah, we have, we, there's nothing that we can do as a county since we do not have a drainage ordinance in place.
So, so he did not need to ask permission to run his water on our land.
Nope. We have no drainage ordinance. And if he's dumping it, if it's on his land where it's coming out, I guess, you know, and that's something you'll have to visit with an attorney about and get to it. Or visit with him, I guess, and see if you can come to some resolution with him first.
And we're wondering if he had a permit to put that.
And we're wondering if he had a permit to put that tile on his land.
He doesn't need one, it's on his own land, we have no drainage ordinances, no, so he does not need a permit to do it.
F S A office was telling us that we need a term uh permit to put tile on our land. They told us that we have to do paperwork.
Uh maybe that's, maybe if you have a program through them, maybe you need to, cause is it through them? So that might be why you have to do it with the F S A if you have programs with them, but. There's no permitting process in Caddington County for drainage.
Neighbors talking to neighbors, that's kind of like. It's gonna happen, so.
There's no grass planted in here, there's no.
There was corn, but it was all washed out. Since that happened, the land renters planted millet. And of course, they harvested it, so it's very brown again. We're working with the township. There is a culvert. Now that's the south end of the field. Yeah, this is the south end, there's a culvert right here on that gravel road in a spool of uh silt.
So that would be their responsibility.
Yes, and we're working with them to try to get that clean out. And a lot of that dirt that's accumulated in there should be hauled back up on the field, because we've got quite a.
So, yeah, I guess all we can do is, yeah, if you're working with the township to try to get that addressed. And then maybe talk to Ray Octoburg, you know, I don't know what solution you can come to, but if you can try to go that route first. And if not, I guess, then it is a civil matter to hire an attorney and and I, you know, I don't know what that process is.
Does Ray farm that land?
Yes, he farms land on. It's his land, yeah.
And and he actually farms it, it's not rented out.
He he owns that land, is it?
Yes, he owns that.
And he tiled his own, he tiled.
We don't have proof, but it's obvious.
No, but it looks like, what you're saying, it looks like he tiled his own land, yeah, that is a civil matter.
It's a civil matter, yeah, there isn't, since there's no drainage ordinance in place, there's nothing that we as a county can do, so. Uh if you pass what the F S A office says too, you know, if they.
Yeah, I don't know what they're talking about when they say permits, that might be on their own, for their own purpose, cause we don't require it as a county.
Now, there are programs to plant grass in those later, right aways.
Yeah, they have.
Or not right aways, excuse me, in those drainage strips.
We've talked about that. And I imagine that Ray Octoburg might have to pay for part of our tiling if we decide to get it done.
Something you'll work out with him, that could be very possible, if he's willing to do that, you may be able to work that out, so. I would suggest having a conversation with him and see if there's something.
Might have been planning on putting dirt back in that big dip, you know, that's on our side.
That conversation should have been held a long time ago.
It would have been nice if he would have told us, because we could have, we could have added on.
Most of these issues could be resolved if they communications were open.
Yes, it's just.
I'm sorry, we can't do more to help you ladies.
Right, thanks for coming, thank you for your time, not a problem, hopefully you can get it, get it resolved, yeah, thank you, thank you. Alright, I don't know if there's anyone else here for the open, doesn't appear to be, we do have a need to go into executive session. Um under contract matters, so item number two. Nope, item number three, my bad, item number three. By type of, is it contract negotiations, it's three.
A second.
Okay, and personnel, alright, okay. We got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. Do we vote? I don't know if we said aye, I'm just like trying to help her and, okay.